Their city council meeting of March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four to order. For the pledge of allegiance, each time we've been having a student from the Do the Right Thing program, Dr. Terry Kedover, working with our police chief, Andy Mills, has brought the international program, Do the Right Thing, to the Palm Springs area. This program recognizes each month youth in our community who set an example. Students recognized in this program are leading the pledge of allegiance at our city council meetings. This week, we have Frida Hernandez, an eighth grader from Raymond Cre Middle School. Frida is one of those students who just does the right thing almost all the time. She's the youngest of four, raised by a single mom. At school, the custodian, PE teacher, security guard, front office, secretary, counselor, and two teachers have made a point of praising Frida to the principal of the school. She's careful and kind with other students and respectful to all adults and peers. Frida is always willing to help and does the, does things because it's in her nature, not because she is looking for a reward. Frida, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Frida. City clerk, could you please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Gardner?
Here.
Councilmember Hostage?
I'm here.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Mayor Protem Dehart?
Here.
Mayor Bernstein?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. And we're going to start with a few presentations. The first presentation is for Dr. Les Zendel, Director of Desert Healthcare District.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to introduce the president of the Desert Healthcare District, Yvette Perez Gill, the interim CEO of the Healthcare District, Chris Christensen, and our chief program officer, Donna Craig, who are here with me to present a check to the city of Palm Springs for seventy-five thousand dollars, which I hope you will accept. In two thousand and sixteen, we began something called the West Valley Homeless Collective Fund. At the time, we were only the West Valley because we were west of Cook. And it was dedicated to helping deal with homelessness, working with CBAG for, as the fiscal intermediary, matching grants with the cities and using those for homelessness initiatives. And over the last four years, six years actually, we've given four million dollars toward that. And the initiative is ending, and we ended up with a couple hundred thousand dollars left over. And so we decided we were going to divide it up. The board decided to give, one of the recipients is to the city of Palm Springs for their homelessness access center. So I have a, so I have a fake check here, which cannot be cashed and we want back, but I have a real check here, which I understand is good for it. So it's a pleasure to give it to you. Would you like to come and accept it, Mayor? Who wants the check? City manager? Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation from Visit Greater Palm Springs.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council and city staff. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening. It's an update on Visit Greater Palm Springs. We're the regional tourism authority, joint powers authority. And Mary Bernstein is our JPA representative. So thank you for all your time and, and support for our organization. It's a lot of work. Is there a clicker? Am I missing a clicker? There we go. With me tonight, I also have Colleen Pace, our chief sales and marketing officer, who will be presenting the marketing portion of this, and Davis Meyer, who's our vice president of government and industry relations. Wanted to give a quick update. Every year, we do a economic impact for the valley on tourism. This is a comparison of two thousand and nineteen to twenty-two. As you can see, we made a good rebound from the pandemic years. Jobs in two thousand and twenty-two were still down a little bit, but I think when the twenty-three study comes out, we'll see that that's rebounded as well. Certainly, the biggest impact is the economic drivers from seven point five billion to eight point seven billion. So as we know, tourism is a huge driver of jobs and the economy and is a great supporter of police, fire, and infrastructure for our cities. And we want to make sure it maintains a very healthy and robust environment. The next one is our budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. I just wanted to show how we're funded. Eighty-one percent comes from our Tourism Business Improvement District, which is both hotels with fifty rooms or more, or vacation rentals at one percent. Hotels are at three percent. Eleven percent comes from private sources, and then eight percent from the JPA. And of the JPA, you can see the city of Palm Springs represents thirty-four point five percent, which is two point eight percent of our overall funding. Eighty-six percent of that goes back out to sales and marketing, and fourteen percent of that's for admin and operations. So we really try to operate like a nonprofit for every dollar that comes in. We want to make sure it goes back out and is done in a very thoughtful and mindful way to grow the economy locally. Areas of focus, we look at this each year with our board and our JPA, and just wanted to give a little reminder that obviously our foundation is to focus on both group and leisure marketing, both domestically and internationally. We do a lot of research. We test all of our marketing efforts, and we do a lot of sentiment studies. And we really want to understand what the consumer, what's driving them, what are the barriers, and to make sure our messaging is appropriate for the different demographics. And Colleen will talk a little bit about that. Vacation rentals, Davis will touch on that in her presentation. Grow air service, that's a huge priority for our destination. We work closely with the airport to make sure that we're sourcing new sites and locations. I'll talk a little bit about that as well. DEI, sustainability, accessibility, and cultural heritage. Lauren Brugamans, who is our Director of Sustainability and Community Engagement, leads that efforts and has a lot of great accomplishments. I wish we could share them all with you tonight, but we know we're short on time. A new effort that is underway is to diversify the regional economy. This is a marketing effort to really position the valley for and to drive new economic drivers for the destination. And then recently, we just secured an agreement with Capital Advocacy out of Sacramento, which will be helping us with advocacy, both on the tourism side and on the new regional economy side. So just a real quick touch point on the JPA agreement. That'll be coming to you for review here soon, in the next few weeks, hopefully. We had come to an agreement on what we thought the agreement should be, and then we discovered that there was some historical information that's going to be discussed tomorrow in terms of when a new municipality comes into the organization. In nineteen eighty-nine, there was an entry fee, and it was a calculation utilized for that, so we're applying that to the city of Coachella. And there'd be also a minimum being presented as well. So staff is recommending the entry fee and a minimum to add the city of Coachella. And then we're also changing the language to add economic development diversity. Right now, we're working on a communication strategy. We're engaged with North Star to help us with the marketing and branding components of that, develop a website, really make sure that we can communicate the right message to those that may be interested in our destination. We promoted Davis Meyer, as I talked about, and then we added Sean Smith as our Director of Economic Development, which will work with all the different cities, specifically Wayne Olson here for the city of Palm Springs. And then we're working with the county right now on developing a strategic plan for the entire valley as well. Air service development, just a couple of quick updates. Our priorities are to try to shrink summer, so how do we get the airlines to extend their service into May-June, and how do we get them to start a little bit earlier? So we're constantly having those conversations. We engage Avion Pacific, which is an air service consultant that works with airlines. A lot of them are ex-airline professionals, and they do a great job for us. This past year, we were able to secure nonstop service from New York with Alaska Airlines. Washington DC is a priority, so we're in conversations constantly every year about trying to add a nonstop flight to DC. That's where all of the national associations are, and it's an important one, not only for the convention center, but the entire valley as well. And as you know, the expansion of the airport, we're trying to solicit letters of support from the airlines that fly to Mexico, destinations in Canada that don't have pre-clearance, and of course, our big dream is to get a nonstop flight to London or Frankfurt or someplace in Europe in the future as well. Convention sales, that's a big component of our organization, our department. We have twelve sales managers. A lot of them are remote, on the East Coast, Midwest, and then here in the West, I mean here in our office here. Total number of leads sent to Palm Springs Hotel last year was nine hundred and sixty-four, which resulted in a hundred and thirty-eight bookings, representing eighty-six thousand room nights, and supported thirty-five thousand jobs, which provided seventy-one million in economic impact. In the subset of that, within those numbers, is we sent a hundred and forty-one leads to the convention center. Twenty-nine of those resulted in bookings, sixty-one thousand room nights, which supports sixteen thousand jobs. Fifty million for the local economy as well. So the convention center is a very important, I think, asset for the city of Palm Springs and for the, for the destination. It drives compression to the hotels, so we need to make sure that the convention center is in top shape. Talk a bit more about that during Rob's presentation as well. And then targeting need periods, a few years ago, we really made a strong effort, both internally and externally with our customers, on how do we drive business to shoulder periods, the summertime period, certain periods of the year. We talk with the hotels on a constant basis to understand where the holes are. But really, if you think about it, early January, midweek during the Coachella festivals, summer, obviously, and then dates in the fall, September and December. And as you can see, for Palm Springs, in two thousand and twenty-two, we generated seven thousand eight hundred room nights. In twenty-three, almost five thousand room nights, and so far this year, thirteen thousand room nights. So we're off to a good start for the need periods. And then with that, I'm going to turn it over to Colleen to talk about destination marketing.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening. Destination marketing encompassing advertising, brand development, website, social media, content creation, public relations and communications, all through highlighting our unique destination through destination pillars and experiences that we offer, including health and wellness, outdoor adventure, arts and entertainment, dining and shopping, culture and heritage, and LGBTQ plus. Last year, here are some highlights from two thousand and twenty-three. We garnered twenty-five billion impressions across all of our media partners and platforms, including almost two million television spots, nine million social video, social media video views, and three point three million website sessions that resulted in six hundred and twenty-nine thousand partner referrals to our local businesses. We also launched our first direct-to-consumer campaign in the UK and Ireland in April of two thousand and twenty-three, again, trying to build awareness in hopes of adding that flight that Scott mentioned, and also supporting international recovery to the destination. You can see here, we garnered forty-eight point five million impressions and two hundred and seventy-six thousand clicks to the specialized landing page that we created for this. So a lot of great engagement and from this, from this program. So we had all of these programs, including YouTube, social media, digital, native advertising, Google, and Spotify. You can see here a couple of the examples that we're running for ads. I also wanted to share, we have representation for PR and trade globally. So you can see here the countries that we have representation, both full-time, part-time, and ad hoc projects that we work with, as well as our United States PR company, NJF. Our co-op programs are one of the programs we're really proud of. We're able to offer subsidized marketing co-op programs and digital billboard, TV, and content programs. We had nineteen total partners last year, and sixteen million digital advertising impressions, a hundred and sixteen thousand television spots, and seven point two billion total impressions generated throughout the year. One of our flagship programs is for summer. It's our summer TV co-op program, where we highlight all the great experiences you can have in the summertime. And we collaborated with three partners in Palm Springs, including the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism, Kimber and Rob, thank you. And I'm going to share these three spots with you now. And we have Palm Springs Preferred Small Hotels as well.
Dive into cool savings with the Summer Splash Pass. Be unique, stay unique. Visit summersplashpasspf.com to learn more.
And lastly, we have Agua Caliente Casinos, which included the Palm Springs location. And we just wrapped our two thousand and twenty-four production, and so the new spots will be coming out in May of two thousand and twenty-four. We do spots every third year, so you'll see new spots for Agua Caliente Casinos for Palm Springs, as well as the small preferred hotels this year. We also integrate all of the assets that we compile through that program into our Check and Chill Out Campaign, which runs May through August, supporting an inspiring summer visitation to the destination. So that includes TV, digital, social media content, billboard, and streaming radio. In addition, we run a Summer Eats Campaign. It's a mobile pass where we promote local restaurants, again, to support summer eating in our destiny. in our destination. And we also create a social media campaign. So in 2023, we did a specialized campaign with some drone footage and some cinematography. It was kind of a new technology that we used. And we had a flagship video influencers who shared it on their platforms. And we had almost 500,000 video views, 12,000 engagements and added 2,300 followers to our Instagram. Who wouldn't want to come here in the summer, right? Lots to do. We also support all the events that happen in the destination. Here are some examples of the Palm Springs specific events that we do support for. These are billboards that we run in LA and San Diego. We also provide digital support through custom blog content, as well as social media support that you can see here, a few examples. Supporting the opening of the cultural plaza with the museum this year, which was very exciting, got a lot of great engagement on social media. And then for 2024, our fall, winter and now leading into spring campaign, here's some examples of the breadth and depth of media platforms that we're currently running on to promote visitation in all of our fly and drive markets. So you can see, it's everything from out of home to connected TV, to OTAs, to digital platforms and social media and everything in between. Here we have a few examples of some of the ads that we're currently running to support the campaign. And right now, we are also layering on a spring getaway campaign to promote spring travel in addition to this campaign, to support sort of the short-term window of spring and maximizing that opportunity. And new and exciting, coming for later this year in the fall of 2025, we're in the process of building out a new brand campaign. We are working with an agency out of New York, Starfish. And we are in pre-production, getting ready to go into production the last week in April. We had three concepts that we worked with Starfish on. And as Scott mentioned earlier, we do everything founded in research. So we sent this out for some research to see what was really resonating with our consumer base. And you can see here, there was a clear concept that resonated with our consumers and all of our test markets that are listed there. And so we're in the process of building that out to launch in the fall. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Davis.
All right. So we work with our vacation rental stakeholders and not just to promote them to visitors, but also to promote the benefits of well-regulated vacation rentals here locally to our quality of life. The new campaign for our local benefits of tourism marketing for vacation rentals is One Coachella Valley Short-Term Rentals, Long-Term Benefits. It's supported with a landing page that has information about economic impact and quality of life benefits of short-term rentals, also regulations in each city and links to each city's resources, good neighbor hotlines, things like that. This is also supported with a digital campaign on social media and digital platforms. And we are out doing activations across the valley as well with this campaign. You'll see us in Palm Springs soon with our fun insulated totes. Another element of our support for short-term rental stakeholders is working with our short-term rentals on host education. So helping especially our independent operators and new property managers understand the regulations in each city and how to best comply with them while still getting five-star reviews. So we work with a national organization called Rent Responsibly on these webinars. We do a series of them. We'll continue to do them going forward. And again, there's a resource landing page that links to each city's information, regulations, good neighbor brochures. And then they provide some really wonderful templates for communications with guests. And again, just how to comply with these regulations in a way that you're still getting great guest reviews. And going in with the sentiment that everything that we do is really grounded in research and data, we did do a voter sentiment survey in September of 2023 regarding vacation rentals in the Coachella Valley. And no surprise to us, we had a super majority of residents feeling favorably about short-term rentals in their city. In the city of Palm Springs, respondents reported 77% of them felt either very or somewhat favorably about short-term rentals in Palm Springs. That number increases even further when the respondents were shown how the economic impact, TOT and the spend from visitors connects back to addressing issues that are most important to them. And so the top four issues are listed there that they reported, fixing homelessness, protecting the community from crime, creating more affordable housing and reducing the cost of living. Another interesting thing with this survey was just the number of respondents who still don't know that permits are required in every city and that there are regulations. So that's another element of our promotion is just really helping to share that message that our cities are regulating and enforcing vacation rental regulations. The survey is available on the website and we're happy to share more of it with you. And now, so of course, we are promoting our well-regulated and good operators to visitors, both in all of our destination marketing, as well as on dedicated channels that target short-term vacation rental visitors specifically. An example of that from last summer was a really fun, engaging campaign that we did with Verbo. This was a pick-your-pool floaty persona campaign and it linked to homes here in the Coachella Valley. It resulted in 17.5 million in bookings for the valley. And for the city of Palm Springs specifically, it was 2.8 million in bookings for vacation rentals located in Palm Springs. I think it might play a little, no, it didn't. So there's some fun assets to go along with that. And we'll be working with Verbo again this year on another summer campaign, really driving vacation rental visitation during that time period. Now, of course, to continue growing our tourism economy and our local economy here in general, we need to be supporting and developing our workforce here locally. So we have a number of programs addressing that. We have a careers in hospitality campaign that's digital and social and directs back to a landing page with resources for folks who are interested in learning more about careers in hospitality and training in hospitality. We work with One Future Coachella Valley on scholarships for students and support services for students looking at careers in education and hospitality. Works with a number of our youth organizations and our school districts, the CTE programs in our school districts. We are forming a Young Hospitality Champions Network. So for folks that are maybe not in an education program right now, but are young and working in hospitality, to help them build networking opportunities and mentorship opportunities and build a sense of pride in their industry, as well as a micro internship program for high school students and additional research on career opportunities here in the Coachella Valley in hospitality. We have a number of really wonderful partners in this work and lots more information about this. One of our workforce and accessibility diversity initiatives is our autism certification initiative. We are working to become a certified autism destination and getting very, very close. The city of Palm Springs actually has more either certified or in-progress businesses than any other city. And I think that might be why one of these bullets fell off for the Palm Springs Convention Center. But they are a certified autism center and the first convention center in the state of California to earn autism certification. So that's been really wonderful and helping us promote to groups and meetings that are, you know, inclusive and neurodiverse, as well as just highlight our wonderful partnership with Care of MSRI Project this year, supporting small business entrepreneurs. So not just those folks working in hospitality, but folks starting hospitality businesses here locally, helping to support their efforts as well. And finally, I'll just highlight, this is a partnership we had through Team GPS, which is our ambassador program with College of the Desert's PACE program. It is a emerging leaders certificate course. It's a six-half-day program for folks who are making their first steps into leadership positions in hospitality. We provide scholarships for this through the Tourism Foundation for folks who are working in hospitality. And I know we've had several in Palm Springs, especially Lulu California Bistro has been a big proponent of this program. So we'll continue that going forward as well. And I'll turn it back over to Scott.
Thank you. That's our presentation and we're available for questions.
I'll just start out, that congratulations. I mean, that is a very impressive amount of work that you have done. I'll just say from our point of view, I'll start out, we had our recent city budget and review and, you know, we've had great TOT and sales tax, which we know is in large part to your efforts and our Measure J sales tax. And we're turning that into investments in our community and paving our roads and a library and parks and a new fire station. So we see that. I appreciate all your support for our small businesses and driving new businesses. I mean, that's one of the unique about Palm Springs, our arts and culture organizations. And I really appreciate the diversity, equity, inclusion efforts. We are a city that prides ourselves on that. And seeing that, all the work that you do with LGBT and autism, it's terrific. I'm excited about the new economic development initiative. I know Councilmember Halstedge and I have pushed that a lot, and especially with our workforce development and youth. And also what I think is great is the way that you've gotten all nine cities now to start really working together and cooperatively because we are one valley. And the work that you've done to really help promote the Palm Springs brand, which we now see as an internationally recognizable brand. So thank you. I don't know if anybody else has comments. I just really appreciate all the work that you do, that you did today and throughout the year.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Gardner.
Just one quick comment. I really appreciate the videos and the diversity that you have in your videos and also that no one is sweating in any of them. I think it's really going to work.
Any other comments? Councilmember Middleton.
Just add my thanks and appreciation for the work you do and for the cooperation we're seeing across the Coachella Valley.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll see you at 8:00 AM tomorrow in India.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we move on to a presentation from the Palm Springs Convention Center by Rob Hampton.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton and city council members. Thank you for your time this evening. We're really excited to give you a peek of our new master plan. The Palm Springs Convention Master Plan presents a comprehensive strategy for the revitalization and expansion of the current facility. This is the wrong slide. This is the wrong slideshow. This is for the architect. I'll keep going. The plan is a result of meticulous consideration of the evolving requirements of the local community, the dynamic event industry and the regional economy. It is designed to modernize the convention center to align with the contemporary standards of 2024 and beyond. Our primary objective is to breathe new life into the existing facility, optimizing the use and capitalizing on the current and underutilized spaces. The master plan envisions positioning the convention center as a world-class venue that not only serves as a central hub for events, but also plays a pivotal role in stimulating economic growth, fostering tourism and enhancing community involvement. The Palm Springs Convention Center, which originally opened its doors in 1988, has seen a series of renovations and expansions aimed to enhancing its capacity and staying relevant in the industry. The most recent of these renovations was the Western Entry Expansion completed 20 years ago in 2005, which brought the total facility size to over 260,000 square feet. However, in the ever-evolving landscape of convention industry, it has become evident that the convention center needs a comprehensive update to align with future demands. In May 2023, CSL completed a forward-thinking, looking study to identify strategic investment opportunities that would ensure Palm Springs maintains its position as a competitive player in the convention industry. These recommendations primarily focus on improving the facility experience for event planners and for attendees alike. These analyses rooted in CSL data-backed study serves as a roadmap for enhancing the Palm Springs Convention Center's market presence. In pursuit of a comprehensive master plan that aligns with the facility's unique requirements, HMC engaged in in-depth consultations with the diverse group of hospitality stakeholders, user associations and of course, our facility staff. Today, we are excited to share the possibilities, the progress and the need of the convention center. So if we could go back to the slide.
I'm sorry, they're trying to fix the slides. It's like a video. So we've gone through your presentation four times already.
You've been through it, but I wanted to, I had some slides that showed the variety of groups that we host there in the building. Very, very proud of it. But I'm also really excited to introduce our architect, the Director of Interior Designs with HMC, Sergio Lachuga. He is going to walk you through the findings and some recommendations from their work with us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton, city council members, city staff. Thank you for having me today. Hopefully, we can get the slides up. But again, my name is Sergio Lachuga. I'm the Director of Interior Design with HMC Architects. A little bit about my firm. We are a firm of 80 years old in Southern California. And our mission at HMC is really to design for good, which is why we primarily only focus on community-type spaces such as education, civic spaces and healthcare. We are a 100% employee-owned business and we are a majority-minority-owned firm.
I know, I believe our city manager went back to try and fix it.
Hey, let's see.
Want to see if this works as a slideshow now?
There you go. Very good. We're going to skip ahead. So again, we're excited to share with you our master plan, a strategic master plan that we endeavored with the convention center, their staff, some associations, to really think about what are the potentials and the opportunities for the convention center. And through those insightful discussions, you know, we created our visions and goals and guiding principles for how we proceed with any future development or renovations for the convention center. One of the more, one of the things that we felt was that we really wanted the convention center to reflect the spirit of Palm Springs. Palm Springs is iconic and it's a world-class destination. And so ensuring that visitors come and they come to the convention center and have it reflect the city is critically important. Again, ensuring that there's a continuity of design. As Rob mentioned, the latest renovation was over 20 years ago. And so as we, you know, experience the convention center, making sure that there is a seamless and consistent look and feel, and as well as elevating the technology and the infrastructure so for, to ensure that new conventions and associations have the needs and technology to put on their shows. All of this really is to serve as an economic driver for the city and to retain and attract new associations and events. Again, Palm Springs is iconic. It's a world-class destination. And so when we think of Palm Springs, we want to make sure that as people come to the convention center, that the convention center reflects that and celebrates that. The existing convention center is really, has done a fantastic job of hosting its associations. And while it's, you know, the staff has worked tirelessly to maintain the convention center and it's beautiful and it continues to do its job, it is in need of a refresh. And again, we want and the east facade also celebrate and reflect the spirit and the iconicism of the city. So the three areas of modernization is an interior renovation, which are renovating, painting the exhibit halls, the ballrooms, meetings, and the lobbies and corridors. Second part is refreshing the exterior with some exterior paint and modernizing the landscape. And then also infrastructure upgrades, so repairing the roof and replacing the chillers. So Phase One, again, just really quickly, is this shows all of the areas in which the first phase would be impacted. So again, just really quickly, updating and modernizing all of the exterior landscapes surrounding the convention center as we move in, again, modernizing the interiors, new paint, carpet, things of that, all throughout the convention center. The ballrooms, again, replacing the existing chiller and just refresh with all the interiors. As we talked about, we want to make sure that, you know, this, as associations and visitors come to the convention center, that they are excited, that it's a refreshed ballroom or exhibit hall, that they can then display their shows, their events in a beautiful space. So in this particular space, what we would be doing is refreshing the acoustics, painting, carpet, and modernizing all of the lighting within the existing facility. Again, as you experience the lobbies and the corridors, you know, again, having it reflect the spirit of Palm Springs with art, new furniture, lighting, ceilings, paint, carpet, all, you know, really just trying to modernize and update the existing facility. So the preliminary cost estimate was done by a professional cost estimating firm that we've worked with for over 20 years. They are, you know, they've been doing this for 30 years in the industry, and these costs were developed by not a cost per square foot, but actual unit costs and quantities of the scope of work that we would be anticipating within the projects. And so again, all of these unit costs do reflect the area, area market rates. And again, depending on the, we've projected for soft costs and escalation of when we would anticipate these improvements to begin. Again, this is really high, high-level estimating as when we move forward with the planning, we would be continually working with the cost estimators to ensure that the numbers continue to tighten up and we get a better grip on what the estimate or the cost would First, that cost estimate was purely only for the first phase of the modernizations, which is the interiors, the landscaping, painting of the exteriors and the chillers and whatnot. Part of this exercise that we endeavored with the convention center was really thinking about the visioning, about what the convention center could be. And so while the next few slides are not necessarily included within the budget that we've just, that I just showed you, we really wanted to take a harder look at how can we really begin to improve the convention center in future years to come. And so part of that is really making, you know, again, their Jackie Lee Houston Plaza is a beautiful plaza. And so we wanted to, again, create the east lawn to reflect, you know, the same sort of energy and beauty that Jackie Lee Houston Plaza has. And so these are just really some conceptual ideas about what they could be and how these areas could really be a money-generating space in addition to the convention center itself. Another vision is to expand the east entry plaza. You know, we know currently that a large majority of visitors park on that east side. And so we wanted, we were thinking of how we can expand some meeting rooms, extend the lobby, and create a new entry so that, again, that both sides of the convention center really reflect a modernized and innovative space. And so when we look at this entry, this is just a high-level concept idea of what it potentially could be, again, including some LED signage, potentially creating some lighting effects on the building that, again, just reflect sort of the excitement and spirit of Palm Springs. So this is a quick rendering of what that potentially could look like, which is very exciting and engaging. And then a night shot of what that might look like with some new LEDs and just a welcoming, exciting entry on the east side. So what we would, you know, hope that the next steps would be is, you know, we love to engage the community. So we know that that would be our first step is engaging the community more and ensuring that we are reflecting the community appropriately. Also to secure city funding, develop an agreement for design services. We were only retained only to do some visioning and high-level master planning and cost estimating. So we would hope that moving forward, we can partner with the city and the convention center to continue on in this project of improving the interiors and then hopefully in the second phases. So we anticipate the work, this initial Phase One, within 10 months and then going through plan check and going through plan check and then construction for a duration of 12 months. And thank you. I'm going to bring up Scott.
Yes, and thank you, Scott. Oh, he's right behind us. Just real quick, we worked with Rob and his team on trying to attract groups for the convention center. And I just wanted to highlight, I know the feasibility study that was done by John Katz showed that if nothing is done, you're going to start to see a decline in, you know, bookings and conventions and room nights and so forth, which will have an adverse effect on all of the businesses, restaurants and small hotels. And we pulled the lost business from last year, was probably the biggest lost business we've had for the convention center, looking back as far as I could look. We lost 112 groups worth 242,000 room nights. But what we're hearing from our customers is that we're starting to lose the opportunity to even bid. So some of the customers are coming in and saying, you know, your competitors are modernizing, they're growing, they're adding more hotel rooms, they're adding different types of products. So I think for the, from a long-term perspective, modernization of the convention center needs to be a priority, hopefully could be a priority. Otherwise, we're going to lose that opportunity to attract the right groups and enough business throughout the year. So we'll work closely with Rob and his team and we'll continue to sell the destination. But I think we're at a point now, we're right at that line where I don't think we can wait too much longer for a modernization of the convention center because we really are becoming less and less competitive with a lot of the other destinations that are moving forward with their expansions and modernization as well.
Yeah.
Scott, a question. How do you measure the lost revenue?
We, well, each group that comes in, we know exactly how many attendees they have, how many room nights they're using and so forth. So we, group business is really easy to measure because we have very good data, whereas leisure is a little bit more difficult because it's a little, you know, not quite as quantifiable. But group business is very quantifiable. But my fear is, is that we're getting an opportunity to bid on these groups now and we're losing them for various different reasons. But what we're hearing from our salespeople and talking with the customers is we have some customers now that are saying, we're not even going to put you into the rotation. Typically, convention centers go into rotation. Groups like to go east, west, midwest, or north and south. And they're coming back and saying, hey, when we rotate back to the west, we're not even going to include you until your center is modernized and competitive for our needs. And a lot of it is even simple things like lights, connectivity of lights and LED lights and being able to control them and just lots of other components of that that are so important to these groups that we're not keeping up with, with these other centers that are taking place in Phoenix and other, you know, Texas, Southern California, Northern California. It's really important that they have the same, if not a better, experience here as they are in those other destinations as well.
And so what was our lost revenue last year?
Well, I didn't have the revenue component, but it was 112 groups, 242,000 room nights. Now, we would have never booked all of those. It's almost impossible, but our conversion rate is typically 25 or 30%. It just kind of depends. But for me, the bigger fear is that we're starting to hear from the customers that we're not even going to get the chance to bid until we can start to improve the product, both at the center and certainly if we can expand hotel rooms as well is another priority, which was in the feasibility study.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other question? Scott, can you just, where are you finding the biggest competition in the West?
We look at Long Beach, San Diego, Monterey, Santa Clara, Portland, Seattle, all of those destinations we compete with, certainly Phoenix. We compete with the East Coast as well, Palm Beach and some of these other destinations. It just depends on the type of group. And then we're also competing, because of the size, we're also competing with places like Gaylord. There's a new Gaylord that's opening up in Chula Vista, which will have, what, 1,400 rooms, I think, and almost as much, if not more, meeting space than your center. So we're at the point now where we're not only competing with other convention centers, we're actually competing with large box hotels as well. So if you can imagine these new builds that are coming in with all rooms and new space and modernization of technology, it's going to make it tougher and tougher unless we keep up.
Okay, great. And Rob, I think in one of your slides, you were showing the connectivity with downtown.
Which set of slides?
The one that went through the video really fast.
No, that was in the, there is not a slide for that. That was in the CSL study, that there's a request or recommendation for that connection to downtown. But this is just focusing on the convention center itself.
Okay, great. Well, I mean, I think what we've seen from our TOT reports and other things that, you know, this is probably integral and integral to our economic future, getting this done. I guess we'll have to have a separate discussion on how we finance this, but it's part of our economic development that we clearly need to. And I appreciate all the work you've done. I know you didn't get to talk about all the different types of events that you've done here, that it's conferences and events and nonprofits and youth and diversity. And so I don't know if you want to speak to any of that?
No, it is all that. I mean, we just walked through the building. We have two groups in this week, DAP, The Chase. Hopefully, some of you will be there. And on the other side of the air wall is White Party. Chase goes until 10:00 and White Party comes in at 10:00. So it's very busy. Last week, we had a, help me, Rick, with the group, yeah, Q, which is teachers. It's about 4,000 teachers that were in. We had Esri, a nice corporate group. Esri is a mapping company of sorts out of Redlands, who does two meetings with us every month. We have the cheerleaders. You know, we all kind of laugh about the cheerleaders, but the cheerleaders bring about 6,000 room nights. The community fills the hotels, fills the restaurants and the shops along. So we're really, really proud of the diversity of the groups that we bring into the building.
Great. And I know one of the things I've seen is the number of people who come for a conference or an event or, and then come back to our city or move to our city. So we hear that a lot downtown from the local businesses, so.
And it's because of the staff over here, too. I know Kimber stepped out, but we have a great team over at the convention center. Thank you.
Terrific. And the Councilmember Middleton.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the report. I think that going forward, we need to prioritize putting together financial plans so that we can take and implement these changes. And that means having, sitting down and truly assessing what are going to be the priority items and getting a plan before us that we can approve.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, do you have a comment? Councilmember Halsted, did you have a comment? I'll just tell you, Peter.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just weigh in on it, just a couple of quick points. Just want to thank all the folks from ASM Global and Scott White and their group for all the work that they're doing on this. Councilmembers will remember about two months ago, you know, it was, we brought forward the future study for the convention center. And the way I sort of have thought about it, there's sort of three components to it. There's the modernization of the current facility that's been discussed today. There was conversations with the council about, you know, the need for, you know, do we need more hotel rooms that are dedicated and room blocks for further convention center business in the future? And then, you know, what should we be thinking about down the road about the expansion of the existing facility? So that future study came forward, we've got that on our website. They then went back and now they're trying to put some more detail to the master plan for the overall facility, which is what we're talking about. And I think your comments are spot on as we're trying to think about where we're going from here. So obviously, you know, when we're looking at some of these modernization improvements from a city staff standpoint, we're going to have to be looking at some financing strategies to bring forward for your consideration. So I think that will be part of the next step, what we're doing. Obviously, we're trying to balance a lot of needs around the city and we have a lot of big projects going on. But this is clearly, you know, a very important component of, you know, what makes everything, what makes everything run. So I think part of it is just for today is getting a little reaction from council. And we're, I think we're getting some good feedback from you today, too, about some of the next steps that have to happen. So I think this was a big-picture discussion and really to share information also with the community, just as we go forward with more transparency about what we're working on, what we're doing. So I think a lot more to come from our standpoint as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think it will be helpful. I know the community often doesn't quite understand everything that happens in the convention center and the economic impact, as Mayor Protem said. And I think the more information we can get out there, the better. And also to our local businesses as well, because I think they obviously benefit a lot from the groups you bring in. So thank you also to Scott and the team for bringing in these groups. Have we really, it's been terrific watching it blossom, watching more things happen during the off months. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I am going to just mention a few proclamations that have happened. We did a proclamation for Peggy Lee, who was honored on March 8th with a 467 star on the Palm Springs Walk of the Stars, and who is one of the most important musical influences of the 20th century, and who helped redefine what it meant to be a female singer and artist, breaking barriers for generations of artists who followed her. We also did a proclamation for Joe Rosen, the founder of the Parkinson's Resource Organization, an organization dedicated to providing practical and emotional support for Parkinson's caregivers and families, and in honor of Mrs. Rosen's 34 years of tireless dedication to all those affected by Parkinson's. And lastly, we did for the White Party Palm Springs in honor of their 34th anniversary Commemoration Weekend, which is this weekend, March 29th to 31st, an event which attracts thousands of visitors from all over the world and brings global visibility to the city of Palm Springs. Okay. And now our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and/or vote? Councilmember Middleton.
Nothing to remove, but I'd like to make a very short comment about 1H after we have taken a vote.
Who else? Mayor Protem, DeHart?
Item 1E, I'm just looking for more information in the staff report on measures of the success that came out of spending our first $200,000 and then what are those measures that we want to look for and quantify for the next $300,000? So I'm not sure I'm ready to approve 1E. I'd just like to see more data on how successful has this, has our work with the consultant been?
Do you want to pull that for separate discussion tonight?
Mr. Mayor and to Mayor Protem and council, yeah, I think we've done a little work, Mr. Mayor Protem, on some of those measures that you're talking about. So I think it would be appropriate, if you have those questions, we can pull that item and we can talk a little bit about it and explain some of that. I did talk to our city engineer. There is a bit of urgency with trying to keep projects moving. So if we can hopefully answer some of your questions, we'd like to do that tonight.
Okay, so we'll pull 1E.
Okay, so we have 1E and I'm actually going to pull 1H and recuse from 1B. Anybody else? Do we have a motion to approve acceptance and with those items removed from the consent calendar, 1H and 1E, and I'm accusing from 1B?
So moved.
Mayor Protem, roll call vote, please.
Yes. Mayor Protem, DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Halsted?
Yes.
Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, at this time, I invite the city attorney, Jeff Ballinger, to provide a report in the closed session.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public at home. The city council met in closed session to discuss the two items that are listed on the agenda. With regard to the initiation of litigation that pertains to a potential receivership With regard to the initiation of litigation that pertains to a potential receivership at 755 East Spencer Drive here in Palm Springs, and the city council voted 5 to 0 on motion from council member Holstich to authorize the city manager, or city attorney's office to pursue a receivership action against that code enforcement property. Otherwise, there was no reportable action.
Thank you. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Your ask to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. If there's written comment that you wish to distribute to the city council members, please hand it to the city clerk. The first speaker is Brad Anderson.
Hi, Brad Anderson, City of Ransom Ridge. My item today would be item number 3A, and that's concerning license plate readers on more or less public right of ways from private entities. I'm opposed to this. I think this is an issue, I have an issue with license plate readers in general anyway. But I believe the city would be amiss to do this because of HOAs or any entity or homeowner or, I guess, property owner that wishes to purchase a camera or a license plate recognition device and have the city install it on a public right of way on their behalf, but share that information with the police department, I believe, is the intention. In theory, yes, it's a good thing, but really it's not because I could do that. I could put, hey, city, put up a, put up a sign up by my property. But that property should be monitored within the property itself and the city shouldn't have any issues with that. So I would be opposed to that just because that's whatever the, I guess, element would be used to install this camera, if it's not on already a light post or something or a freestanding post, that's an issue for another commission of the city. It's just another blight upon the city, another instrument to be, maybe possibly ugly to a lot of people and maybe a potential hazard for trafficked or even pedestrians, and pedestrians have people walking. And I need to go. I thank you very much. I have another commitment this evening and thank you for listening.
Thank you. I have two on Zoom here. The first is Eric Kristen, then followed by Dave Everett.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Eric Kristen, Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction, where a statewide organization was formed 25 years ago to oppose discriminatory and exclusionary project labor agreement. It was a couple of years ago, which all but excludes the 85% of the local construction workforce who reside in the city from being able to bid and work on projects paid for with their tax dollars. The first lesson you had in this was the homeless navigation center, which went from $15 million under PLA to $40 million and was behind schedule. As we warned you, we tried to tell you what project labor agreements lead to when you exclude the majority of the industry and working men and women who don't happen to be in a union from being able to bid those projects. You learn firsthand. Tonight, you're going to learn additionally how much project labor agreements cost when you, under item 1E, approve up to $500,000 just to monitor this new level of bureaucracy that you foisted upon the city because big labor special interest groups demanded it of you in order to garner further campaign contributions. This is what happens when you put special interests ahead of the best interests of all taxpayers, not just a certain group that you happen to support politically. That kind of bigotry gets you these results. Half a million dollars could have been used for any number of things, I'm sure, that the city could have had this money been used for in a better sense. But now it's being used to pay just a third party governing the bureaucracy that is a project labor agreement. Truly a solution in search of a problem. You didn't have any problems with your previous projects. Things were going out to bid with open competition. Union and non-union contractors were being able to bid them. Then you did the will of big labor special interest, who is the Labor Department just came out with last month in Washington DC, showed that in California, they're only 85%, 85% of the local construction workforce is union free. So this is a lesson. It's more money that didn't need to be spent on this. It's shocking. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dave Everett.
Hi, my name's Dave Everett. I'm calling on behalf of the Western Electrical Contractors Association. I kind of wanted to echo a lot of the, the points that Eric made, that these project labor agreements always result in increased cost. You saw it on the very first project there. That was the navigations, the homeless navigation center that went from being an estimated $15 million up to $40 million. And then now you're seeing it this evening where $200,000 was the price tag to admit, just administer the project labor agreement just one year ago when it was signed. And that's already going up by 50% with a clause that it could go as high as 150% of the original estimate. And, you know, if you kind of proportionally look at that, if seven projects took $200,000 and, you know, you have 15 projects left, you're going to hit that $500,000. So now you've hit a half million dollars is basically wasted just to administer this discriminatory policy against 85% of the local construction workers. So just this last Tuesday, I watched the Solis Group give a presentation on the Ranch of Santiago Community College Project Labor Agreement. And they didn't hit any of their goals, whether you measured it by people, whether you measured it by hours, whether you looked at the local hire requirement, or whether you looked at the county hire requirement, they didn't hit any of them. And on this, and if you read the staff report, there's nothing about the, the local hire goals, there's nothing about the veterans' goals, or the minority goals, or the LGBT goals, or the disadvantaged worker goals. They're not reporting on any of those. And I would suspect that it, just like at Ranch of Santiago, the reason they're not reporting on those is that they didn't hit those goals. And, you know, and a lot of people in the construction industry feel that the reason they're not hitting these goals is that that's not the point of these project labor agreements or community benefit agreements. They're, they're so kind of negatively viewed that they, they change the name of them often, community workforce agreements. But that's not the goal, is to provide local hire or local veteran hire or minority hire or goals. The, the goal is to give a sole source contract on the public works to, in, in the city, to the big labor bosses.
Mr. Everett?
And some say that there's no good reason, no good.
Oops, okay, your time is up. Does any other public comment?
No further commenters.
Okay. The next item is the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to the, to accept the consent calendar without items 1E and 1H, and I'm accusing from 1B. Do we have a motion? We're going to do a.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem DeHart?
Yes.
Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Councilmember Middleton, do you want to make your comment now?
I just.
You're, you're on 1E, so it's already polled.
1H.
1H, okay. We're going to start with 1E. Can we have a, do you want to follow staff report, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I'm, I'm specifically looking at measurements and, you know, the, what goals have we met? What goals did we achieve? What were our successes in the previous $200,000 that we've spent on the three, four, five, six, seven projects? I don't need the full, I've read the staff report.
So Mayor and council members, in response to the question, while I don't have a full report in terms of compliance with all of our goals of the project, of the community workforce agreement, we do have a report from the Solis Group on apprentices. One of the goals of our community workforce agreement is to train those in the construction field. And so relative to that aspect of our community workforce agreement, the Solis Group reports that of the project hours on the seven projects, approximately 65% of the apprentices are local hire. And so what we're seeing is a 65%, 35% split among those who are apprenticing in the trades. And so that is the report that we have for you this evening. In addition to that, the Solis Group does also monitor other aspects of our community workforce agreement. What I might suggest is that we provide city council a memo in terms of how well we're doing, and we'd like to provide that to you in advance of the April 11th city council meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be fantastic. And what's the definition of local? So we've got 65% local, if we can learn what that definition is, and, and if we can learn in that 65%, you know, how many, how many really, do we know how many were women? How many of these hires came out of, you know, some of our marginalized communities? If, if we can just learn more about, you know, how effective were we at these apprenticeships? I think that was really one of our, our primary goals is, is to be able to give the opportunity to, to local residents. And so any information you can share would be appreciated.
Certainly, we'd be happy to do that.
Councilmember Middleton, do you?
So are we moving forward or are we delaying this?
No, I think we could, he's, we're going to get a memo. I'm happy with getting a memo.
I will make a motion to approve 1E.
I'll second.
Any other comments or discussion? Councilmember Holstich is there, okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem DeHart?
Yes.
Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, the next item is 1H, which I pulled. And I didn't actually want a whole staff report, but I did want to invite our fire chief down and, among the operations. The question I had, and which has been coming from the public, and then I'll ask Councilmember Middleton, was that on page 29, when we list the updates, there's a whole list of fire emergencies that happened. And on our city ranking, wildfire is rated, wildland fire is listed as the number 17 out of number 20 hazards. And I just, so my questions, my questions are, is that accurate? What are we doing? What is happening this year? I know this goes through 2022. Are we in a different situation? And how are we addressing this? I don't know if Councilmember Middleton had different questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, Paul Alvarado, Palm Springs Fire Chief. So Mayor, thank you for that question. And as you stated, that local hazard mitigation plan was developed back, starting in 2021. So as you all know, the city was in the midst of a pandemic. So when you look at that ranking, when they prioritized number three being a pandemic, that was on the mind and on, obviously, the priority list for the team at the time. So collaborative effort between stakeholders and the community to come together and put that. In fact, our emergency manager, DeSelm, was part of that group. But looking at what we're facing today, since I've been here, when I landed here as the fire chief in May of 2023, one of my top priorities has been looking at the wildland fire hazards in our city. And I've spoke to many of our community groups speaking to that. And we have aggressively taken action on that by doing fuel mitigation on the west part of the town and moved into the south part of town. And we're going to continue to do that. We're working with staff right now to encumber more funds for that and actually come up with a, a process of maybe including some, some ghosts to do some of that mitigation effort for us. Yet to be seen. But that plan was developed again in 2021, 22. My sights are what's in front of me right now. With the weather starting to warm up, with those fuels starting to get warmer and drier, it's important for me to take advantage of the time right now before it gets too hot and mitigate those fuels right now. So that's the plan from the fire chief. And I have the emergency manager here. If you want to talk a little bit maybe on the hazard mitigation plan and the development of that?
All right, chief.
All right.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. So the hazard mitigation plan, it's a guide and a planning document to help decision makers focus where they want to put resources. So as the fire chief said, when we initially put the plan in, which was August 1st of 2022, we were still planning on COVID. With all of the recent changes in climate, you know, we had our first hurricane in Southern California, caused a lot of vegetation growth. It, it's really changed what our priorities should be. The document doesn't hold us fast to, hey, these are the way that we prioritize things. They're just at the time, there's a snapshot in time. And FEMA knows that we are planning for these top 20 things and we can adjust our priorities as things change.
Great. Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. And Chief Danny, thank you. I wanted to congratulate you on the work that went into this and on the ability that I'm seeing in here to be flexible in responding to the actual emergency that comes before us. I don't think any of us a year ago were sitting here thinking we might have a hurricane. But with the kind of planning that went into our response in August, we did show that we could be prepared for almost anything that would come our way. In just some numbers that I've come across in the last 40 months, the governor has declared an emergency somewhere in the state of California over 35 different times. So we know we are headed into times when there are going to be more and more of these kinds of incidents. We're going into the budgeting season, and I'll say something that council members probably shouldn't say, but if you need resources in order to be able to respond to the emergency, make sure that we see what it is that you need. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, did you have a? Okay. So just two quick questions on the wildfires, as I know you're looking at everything, but there's a lot of vacant lots that are privately owned. And are we monitoring those? Because they look beautiful right now, but they're going to be fueled soon. And then the other question is, what can residents do in their houses, on their own property who, who live here?
Mayor, that's a, that's a great point. It's a team effort here. The fire department is really, we're looking at the very high fire areas that were designated by the state in 2022. So I'm responsible for those areas, and that's really along the west side and south part of the city. If you look at the hazard mitigation plan, there's a map that will outline that. The areas in the red are what those areas are. But there are many areas throughout the city that are owned by private property owners that really, they have the responsibility to take care of their property, just as we're doing in those very high fire areas. And so it's important for community members, when they see those, notify the fire department, engage Palm Springs is a great way of doing that. Let us know where those properties are, and we'll work hand in hand with our code enforcement partners to ensure that violations are cited on those properties and that those are maintained to keep everyone safe in our community.
Great, thank you. So, and thank you for all the work on this. I agree with Councilmember Middleton, it's a great job, it's very informative. Thank you also to Danny on this. It's really, it's a terrific document and, and we have seen that our preparedness has really gone a long way in keeping our residents safe. So thank you. I'm ready to make a motion to approve? Roll call vote?
Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem DeHart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
The next item is 2A. It's a request for approval of the 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan, AAP, and to approve a 2023-2024 substantial amendment. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. Jay Verada, Director of Housing and Community Development for the city. Before I get started, I would like to make a technical correction on the staff report. On the first page of the staff report, at the end of the second paragraph, the number 129,490.90 should be changed to 112,873.9. This is because the number, well, the number that's two lines above that actually says 71,847.31, but that should also be reduced to 55,229.6. Now, the reason for that is because there was an additional expenditure made for the Demuth Community Park Center air conditioning that was not included in the previous staff report at the February 8th public hearing. And this change, these changes will be reflected throughout the staff report in, in the 2024 Annual Action Plan. Annual Action Plan, which is the current year, that'll be amended, and the substantial amendment resolution. So the amount of the unspent CDBG funds, CV, the coronavirus funds that were allocated to the city a few years ago, is unchanged. So that amount of 57,643.59 will still be carried over. So again, this is the second of two public hearings to adopt a resolution approving the community development block grant annual action plan for fiscal year 2024-2025, and to adopt a resolution approving a substantial amendment to carry forward the funds from the previous years. The first resolution for the annual action plan, as reviewed with the city council on February 8th, includes allocations for fair housing at 61,950, residential rehabilitation program at 351,0050, for a total amount of $413,000. And that is an estimate of the award we would receive based on prior years, or I should say, last year's award. Fair housing services are a mandatory component of the city's CDBG program and promote fair housing rights, landlord tenant mediation services, and discrimination investigations, and would also provide workshops and seminars. The residential rehabilitation program would be to help low and moderate income residents with necessary repairs to their housing, address building code deficiencies, eliminate blight, and to improve handicapped access. With the maximum rehabilitation grant being 25,000, it's estimated that 14 households can be assisted through this program. The second resolution is to approve a substantial amendment to carry forward unspent funds from previous years. And as I noted, that number will be changed to 112,873.19. These funds would be added to the current year residential rehabilitation program to assist with approximately four more households. The substantial amendment funds can be deployed after the resolution is approved and the amended annual action plan is submitted to HUD. However, for next year's annual action plan, we will not be able to deploy those funds until July 1st of 2024, which is the beginning of the program year. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions or have the public hearing opened?
Are there any questions for staff? Mayor Protem?
Hey, Jay, what, what, what's the total dollar amount that's not available until July 1?
$413,000, and again, that's an estimate.
Oh, on page three, yeah? Okay. And then what is, what's, what's our total for housing rehabilitation? Do we have other dollars beyond what we're talking about here?
Yes. In the current year's budget, I have to estimate about $350,000.
Take in?
$350,000 for residential rehab.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? My question is, how fast can we get the funds deployed, both this one and then in the new year?
Well, by deployed, you mean?
Into fixing people's houses.
Into fixing people's houses. We, we currently have a waitlist. So as soon as we receive the, the approval from HUD for next year's funds, those can be deployed. And as we supplement the current year's funds with the carry forward funds, those can be deployed, but there is time to enter into a contract with the resident and for the resident to enter into a contract with a contractor that will do the repairs. So those also factor into the timing process.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing. This public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. Do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers for this public hearing.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from the council? I just have one comment, and I've heard from residents who have been the beneficiaries, is just that the bureaucracy of going through this is really quite difficult, especially when they're at the point where it's kind of crucial. So anything we can do to help speed it up for the residents, who, we heard from one this week, whose roof is collapsing, and it's kind of very difficult for them to understand that they have to wait when they, when it is an emergency for them. So I appreciate all the work, but anything we can do to help, I think would be great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just want to add on to that. Just so there's no misunderstanding, the, the delays that the mayor's talking about are at no result of city staff delays. It's just the governmental process of getting approvals and the steps that staff has to take to, in order to be able to expend this money. Yeah.
Correct. This was not any comment on your work. It was just, it's the contractors in the process, so thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, Mayor Protem. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Councilmember Garner, seconds. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Protem DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay. The next item is 2B. It's to conduct a public hearing under section 53083 of the California Government Code to approve a hotel operations covenant between the City of Palm Springs and Caliente Tropics LLC, a California limited company pursuant to municipal code, chapter 5.26 of the city's hotel operations incentive program. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, staff, and members of the public. My name is Wayne Olson. I'm the chief economic development officer for the city. I'm here tonight to open a public hearing and request approval of the hotel operations covenant agreement before you with Caliente Tropics LLC for the Caliente Tropics Resort. I'm also seeking to authorize the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents related to this matter. I have just a couple slides I wanted to run through to show you some of the improvements that the property has made. The Caliente Tropics is located at 411 East Palm Canyon Drive. The original hotel was built in 1963 by Ken Kimes. The resort is home to Sancho's Mexican Restaurant and La Fern Bar. In 2014, the current owners purchased and renovated the property. I'll advance the slides here. It has 92 guest rooms, pool, office, and grounds. The F and B is managed externally and not managed by the hotel. The latest updates took place in 2023, and the Caliente Tropics is seeking reimbursement through the city's hotel incentive program. You can see on your screen that improvements were made both to the interior guest rooms as well as to the exterior improvements, including new pool improvements, site landscaping, and wayfinding. The cost of these improvements totaled $884,833, or approximately $9,617 per key. Staff reviewed documentation and conducted due diligence at the site and has determined the hotel is eligible for reimbursement upon council's approval tonight. The hotel is seeking reimbursement under program guidelines at a rate of 50% of the incremental TOT it will earn from the date of the covenant agreement execution. The baseline from which we calculate increment is $270,000, approximately, an average derived from the previous three years of TOT generated by the hotel. The hotel will receive 50% of that increment for 10 years or up to the total reimbursement of costs, whichever comes first. In addition, it is anticipated that the guests of the hotel will generate approximately $2.2 million in sales tax over the next 10 years, which equates to a 2.7x return. Finally, the hotel must agree to participate in both the convention center committable rooms program as well as the city's room participation program. At this point, that concludes the presentation. I want to say a special thank you to the economic development staff and prior community development staff for helping us get up to speed on this program, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff? Okay. Well, I have some questions.
Sure.
So they only had to spend $5,000, but they spent $9,300 per room?
That's correct. The minimum spend rate is $5,000 per room across the aggregated project, but they did spend close to $10,000 per room.
Okay. So and it says in here, I guess their base rate was $270,000?
That's correct.
So based on this, they need to make another 170-something thousand per year in TOT?
Yeah. If you divide the cost over 10, yeah, it would be about 174,000 per year, so.
So it's like a 66% increase in TOT?
You have faster math than I do, but I think that's, that sounds right, yeah.
Okay. Have, have we seen in the past that these have covered all their costs within the 10 years?
Mr. Mayor, we did some quick analysis on that, and up to the point here, the program only provided, or provided TOT for the full term of 10 years. The renovation project now reimburses costs, and so it is a matter of reimbursing the cost or the 10-year, whichever comes first.
Okay. And was they, were they part of the, do we know if they were part of the convention center's committable rooms before?
I did check with our convention center colleagues. This hotel was not part of the committable convention center.
Okay. So this will add rooms to help our convention center?
It will add rooms to help.
Okay. So that, that's terrific. And I have a question, and asked you this before. Is it historic at all, this building?
Mr. Mayor, the applicant did try to apply under the class one to receive 75% of the TOT. Unfortunately, with, upon review by the planning department, this site has not yet reached class one status. The applicant is free to apply for that, but at its current application status, it is not a class one site.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. This time, I'd like to, does anyone else have questions? I don't necessarily, Councilmember Holstich? Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Public is invited to speak on this. Councilmember Holstich, do you have a question? Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. Do we have any public speakers?
No public speaks, no public speakers.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Okay. I would just like to say, I think this program, the hotel incentive program, is a terrific program because it encourages the hotels to renovate and improve their properties, and it only costs us half of their incremental TOT tax. So we have no loss in this, and we can only gain, and they're actually putting the investment upfront. So it's, it's a terrific program, and I know we recently extended it, and I hope that we keep doing that as long as it proves successful. So we have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Protem DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Let's show what that light is. The next item on the agenda is 3A, which is regulation of automated license plate reader, ALPR cameras on public and private property. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, this item before you is a follow-up item from the meeting in, in January, where not all of the council members were present. So the council did discuss automated license plate readers briefly. At that time, directed city staff and the city attorney's office to conduct a little bit more research with regard to the potential regulation of these license plate readers on private property and bring it back. And so we are back before you tonight to seek direction with regard to whether and what type of policy the council would like to establish with regard to automated license plate readers on both public property, such as rights of way, as well as private property. The staff report indicates, and as we reported to the council in January, the issue of regulation of license plate readers on public property, including just flat out publicly-owned property as well as within the city's rights of way, is pretty clear. The city has very broad authority to allow private entities such as neighborhoods, organized neighborhoods, or HOAs, should they approach the city for that, to, to place those within the city's rights of way, and for the city to place conditions on that placement, such as requiring the, the entity that places the license plate readers in, in the rights of way to provide access, for instance, to our police department. Were those conditions to be placed on the placement, the, the city's police department would, of course, comply with SB 34 and the city's existing license plate reader policy. With regard to license plate readers that are placed on private property, as we've indicated in the staff report, the city attorney's office and the city staff has not been able to identify really any other cities that have gone so far as to regulate these license plate readers on private property. As I mentioned in the staff report, I suppose theoretically, the city council could regulate that type of use of private property. It would essentially be expanding the rights of travelers or members of the public and their rights of privacy beyond what is currently established under federal constitutional law, at least with regard to Fourth Amendment protections. Currently, courts have stated that members of the public who are traveling or present in public places really don't have a right of privacy as against being filmed or photographed, and that's essentially what these license plate readers do, as well as transmitting and searching out information from state databases. So again, I suppose the council could, from a legal perspective, do that. However, I think it would be, it, it would take a lot of work in terms of defining exactly what that expanded privacy right is, why it differentiate, might be differentiated from a person in the public's right to not be photographed by any number of other cameras, such as Ring cameras, other security cameras, people's cell phones, dash-mounted cameras. And so we'd really have to work through defining what that right is and, and justifying it to, to any potential courts that might review that. So I'm certainly available to answer any more questions about that, but we, we just haven't been able to really find a model, and we think it might be a pretty laborious effort if the council's so inclined. So with that, working with the police department and the city attorney's office, we presented what's in the staff report, which is really a proposal and a request for direction from the city council to direct staff in the city attorney's office to come up with a policy that allows for the placement of license plate readers within the city's rights of way on other city property, but subject to conditions such as the requirement that those license plate readers and the data be provided to the police department and used by the police department in accordance with SB 34 and the city's license plate reader policy. And further, that obviously, the engineering department would review those encroachment agreements and encroachment permits, but that the city hold off at this time on regulation of license plate readers on private property. That concludes my staff presentation. I'm certainly available to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions from council? Councilmember Middleton?
Chief, could you talk about the effectiveness of the license plate readers in solving crimes?
Good afternoon, city council and Mayor Bernstein. Yes, I can, Councilmember Middleton. Since we've had the license plate readers up, we have helped, used them to help us solve burglary series. We also got a, one of our listings that we put into the system, wound up as a kidnapping, and the person was taken into custody as a result of that. Weapons possessions carrying, I'm just going through a list of these. A person from Washington State wanted for human trafficking came into our city. That person was arrested also, and multiple motor vehicle thefts were recovered as a result of the license plate readers. So in a very short period of time, 1,100 hits on the license plate readers going to our police officers in the field in multiple arrests.
Thank you. Yeah. Am I correct, as I understand it, that these license plate readers that would be on public property, all of that data would go solely to the police department to be used in accordance with state law and would not be shared with a private entity?
Any license plate reader on public property, we do not share with anyone else other than legitimate law enforcement agency where we have an agreement with them and that they will comply with a council's direction already of not sharing it out of state as well as with people in the federal government, such as Customs and Border Patrol.
All right. And lastly, as I understand what's being proposed, we will not take any action with regard to license plate readers or other cameras that might be on private property that are solely directed at private property?
I don't think we would regulate those, those cameras, whether they're pointed solely at private property or if they also happen to be pointed at public areas.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton, Councilmember? Councilmember Middle, Councilmember Garner, sorry.
Can you clarify the use because it's confusing in the staff report? If there are neighborhood organizations or HOAs that are putting up these cameras, but they're putting them in the public right of way, would they also have access to these cameras?
From an operational standpoint, they may have access to the photographs just like they would a regular camera. They do not have access to any of the criminal justice data that comes with it, including license plate, who owns that vehicle, where that vehicle's from. They get absolutely nothing other than a photograph and the people I've talked to don't even want that. They just want the alert to go to the officers in the field.
Thank you. And then the other is, in the staff report, it mentioned that we would, they would be sharing this information with us, we would have this access, that we would, as law enforcement, you would be able to find out who accessed the images, what time they accessed them, how often, et cetera. Would that information then be subject to public records requests? Maybe that's better for the city attorney. Sorry, Chief.
Thank you.
I think we would only be accessing that information if it was part of a criminal investigation and in that case, it would generally be exempt from disclosure except certain information that might be allowed.
Not our officers, I mean the HOA members who also have access to this information.
Oh, if it's just going to the HOAs or the neighborhood, no, it would not be a public record.
Okay, so these would be considered two separate issues, even though these are cameras that would be on the public right of way?
Correct. If we don't have access to them and we don't actually use them, then they never become a public record.
Right, but we're saying that our law enforcement are able to access the records to find out how often somebody is looking at images and when.
It's my understanding that the way this operates, and the chief can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, is that we only reach out and access the data if we need to for a particular reason or if it's pinged to us. And so it's not like the data is automatically coming to the city or the police department. So it's only when that data comes to the police department that it's actually becoming a public record.
I understand. Okay, so then that means that we wouldn't necessarily know how often private residents are checking these cameras unless we decided to look and we would likely have reason for that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. Just to follow up, so I, so I understand clearly, you're saying that even if we give sole access to the police department for the cameras on public property, public right of way, you know, installed by HOAs or neighborhood organizations, the neighborhood could still access photos from the cameras?
It's my understanding, yes, they would still be able to access the photos just like if they installed a Ring camera, Nest camera, or their cellphone on their property and pointed it at the right of way, yes.
Who could? So anyone who has access to the neighborhood or the HOA's account?
It's my understanding that only certain individuals within the HOA or the neighborhood would be able to have access. If that's an important bit of information for the council, then I think we could condition the use of that data or the availability of that data to certain members of the neighborhood or the HOA.
This is like a can of worms every time you kind of scratch it. There's more information, right? I attended the neighborhood organization annual meeting, which is in my district, that has requested this camera and a number of the residents I had, they asked me about this policy. I said that there were, you know, big data, big tech, sort of privacy concerns, that we wanted to ensure that the community had the same benefit of the terms and the protections that we negotiated with FLOC and that those would apply because, you know, had we just approved the request that's in front of us by the neighborhood, they would not be protected in that way that we negotiated. And a lot of the residents also sort of seemed surprised by that information, like they fully haven't been briefed about the risks of this policy and the, you know, the benefits as well, but really like the risks to them and their privacy. And so they, many of the residents asked, oh, we believe we could be, we could opt out. So we, they thought that, they think that they can list or input their license plate so that they're opting out of being tracked, which is the capability of this technology, right? So can you explain a little bit for those residents listening along and, you know, wondering how they can opt in or opt out of this program in their neighborhood? Because I think that, my understanding just from that meeting was that they think they can opt out and so they won't be tracked or there won't be photos of their license plates. And so I'm wondering, are they opting out of the photos being taken? Can their HOA or neighborhood access those photos, right? Like what's the scope of them opting out?
I'm not familiar with an option to opt out on an individual vehicle or license plate or personal basis. I don't know if the chief is, I've not heard of that.
I have not heard of that either.
And so what's the approval process for a neighborhood? Can one person in a neighborhood ask for this based on, you know, their own desire for this policy or this technology in their neighborhood? Like what's the, or does staff have a recommendation for, I know you're considering a permit process when we regulate this? So, you know, what's the authority that someone can have to apply for this on behalf of a neighborhood, especially if, you know, all the considerations aren't shared with all of the folks who, you know, are joined with that HOA or with that neighborhood organization?
That's a fair question and that's something that if the council directs us to draft up a policy, we would come up with. It would be similar to how we interact with other neighborhood-like organizations such as HOAs when dealing with vacation rental permits. So possibly requiring something on official neighborhood letterhead, that's going to be easier for those neighborhoods that are formally incorporated, but we'd have to come up with something for those neighborhoods that are not technically incorporated as well.
Right, and remind me if anyone knows for our 1PS ordinance, so we don't require, do we require formal organization by a neighborhood? I know some of them have nonprofit status, some of them don't. I think last time we discussed this, some of them do have a formal process. Obviously, we want to, you know, support the neighborhood's own democracy in deciding how they're organized, but how do we, yeah, ensure that we're dealing with an entity as opposed to a few neighbors?
Right, our ordinance does not require incorporation.
As I recall, if I may, we have recommended to the neighborhoods that they take nonprofit status. Not all of the neighborhoods that we have are sufficiently large enough in terms of the volunteers that are in the neighborhood to have obtained that or have the financial resources to take and put this together. But there is clearly a list of neighborhoods that have been recognized by the city and there is a process that those neighborhoods have to go through in order to be recognized by the city.
And I will add that from a legal perspective, it would probably be better for the city to issue an encroachment agreement or an encroachment permit to an organized neighborhood, one that is formally established as a corporate entity as opposed to those neighborhoods that have not incorporated.
I think that might be actually wise and would be a further precaution.
I agree. Thank you, Madam, former Chair of 1PS. Appreciate your insight. Is there liability for the city? So we have, you know, a neighborhood organization applies for an encroachment permit, puts up this technology, and then there's other neighbors who disagree or thought they could opt out and find that they can't opt out. You could imagine if the neighborhood still has access to the photos, right? Like some level of potentially misuse? Would there be liability against the city for approving that if there's some sort of, you know, privacy violations or other torts or other even criminal activity?
I'm trying to think of potential liability. Generally, the city isn't liable simply for issuing a permit like an encroachment permit and fundamentally, you know, a person, again, who's traveling in the right of way doesn't have an expectation of privacy. So I find it, I would find it difficult to believe that there would be liability for those kind of neighbors who were misled or not informed properly.
Well, traveling in the right of way itself, you don't have any reasonable expectation, but the Supreme Court cases are complex, right? About like when you would have an expectation of privacy. You know, again, we raised like, are these, what are these cameras facing? You know, are they picking up anything else in private homes, through windows, et cetera, right? So, I mean, at least I could imagine scenarios where it might capture more than just, you know, your comings and goings on a daily basis, right? Like that has the potential of misuse. So that seems to me, you know, potentially at least a risk of protected activity or private activity.
Yeah, and I think just like with those license plate readers that the city is going to acquire and own and operate, we're going to make sure that those are not capturing information that would be considered private. And I think we would have the same process in place, if the council approves this, we'd have the same process in place as part of the process for approving the location and placement of these cameras.
Thank you, that's helpful. And I, of course, you know, the city is the government, so we're elected, we have, you know, public records act requests, there's all types of protections, you know, in relation to the public's access to information about the government. It just gets very different when you're talking about, you know, a private entity or an organization or, you know, neighborhood organization or an HOA. I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm a little concerned because this is new information to me that I thought we were giving sole access to the police department, which is just like our cameras, which I support. If the HOA or the neighborhood organization is still going to have access to photos or other information or potentially be able to access the technology, that's concerning to me. And then if I was just at a neighborhood organization where many, many residents thought that they would be able to opt out of this and they're the ones asking for this program and in fact, you know, there is no way to opt out and they don't know that, that's concerning for me as well. So sorry, I thought we had this sealed up and then it got, you know, those lead to more concerns and more questions, at least for me. So thank you.
Councilmember, I have a clarification on the opting out portion of it. And you can, in fact, opt out of it in your neighborhood. It does not go into the entire system, but in that neighborhood, you can opt out. So they would fill out a form, it would go to the company and the company would suppress that license plate from being read in that neighborhood. And then the second piece is that you, Councilmember Garner had asked earlier, that there is a log that captures any time somebody does a search on the system, so that could be inspected periodically, if allowed under the law, to see if it is being, people are going into searching for what purposes. You have to list a purpose for why you've gone in.
I remember having that conversation with PD, right? And so we would have a log, we want to protect our employees, right? And so we want access to that log, we're saving the data and collecting, holding it for a neighborhood who possesses that information. Are they also giving sole access to that, to our department, so we can automatically look at those searches or do we need a warrant to get that, right? What does that look like, our access to the logs and who's accessed them?
If I'm understanding the information correctly and the HOA has to maintain the log or the log is created, we could, again, as part of the encroachment agreement or encroachment permit, we could require that the city have access to that data if the council is so inclined to get data, get that access.
Can I ask a very specific question on the, on public property? Because we went through a whole process of, and Councilmember Holstich did a lot of work on, not only are making sure our police policy was in the FLOC agreement, but, you know, making sure there was a process for when it went into neighborhoods. Can we simply say that anyone who wants to put it on city property just has to be added to our, to what the police already do, where the police have sole access and it follows their policy? Because the policy that we set was strong and good and I think the police agreed with it and they had all the agreements and FLOC had to agree to it as well. So if it's on, and I know we have a private property section to go, but on the public property, can we just say it has to fall? Basically, they're just paying, they're going to be donating a camera to the police.
Yes, and if I, yes, and if I understand your question correctly, it would be expressly stated that the HOA and the private entities would not have access even to the photos and other data. So if that's the direction the council wants to go, you can provide us that direction.
Well, and also, just to be clear, when we talked about it, when the police put a camera in a neighborhood, there was a certain sensitivity process that they were going through, you know, making sure that an HOA wasn't just solely focusing on the, you know, on the house or the apartments across the street. But they, the police had a sensitivity and I think on public property, if we could have that same policy in place, I think we've all come to, well, we had a majority agreement on that policy. And so that might be a simpler starting point for the cameras on public property. If, if we're in agreement, now we still have the private property issue, but on the public property, that seems like we don't need, if we, if we have a majority agreement, we can all just move on to the private property section and bifurcate it. Is that an option? Attorney?
Yes, that's an option. I just, I would want to, you know, restate what the understanding of that majority is and I think it's what I just said, which is the council would direct staff to come up with a policy for placement of these cameras on public property with the caveat that the data be provided solely to the city's police department using, in accordance with law.
With our existing policy and our existing agreement with FLOC. Is that? Councilmember Garner.
So you're saying, but this would still be at the request of these neighborhood organizations or HOAs?
Yes.
It wouldn't be beyond that?
And we, so they would pay for it, they'd pay for the insulation, the maintenance and again, we'd have to come up with a process for determining whether the neighborhood or HOA actually is authorized to make the request to the city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. Doesn't it sidestep some of the issues like, you know, the neighborhood still? Sorry, I'm an attorney, I'm a local attorney, I've gotten lots and lots of requests for neighbor disputes, right? And so we get those a lot in Palm Springs as council members too, right? And so I'm just imagining like the horror that is the neighborhood disputes with additional technology and camera and that, and I thank you for the police for playing along with me here in this thought experiment, but you know, that's, our job is to respond to these neighbor disputes and the peace in the neighborhoods, especially in these organizations which play an important role in the city and in our government. So wouldn't it just kind of sidestep like the HOA's access to the data still, our access to the logs, like the potential for misuse, this opting out thing? If neighborhoods, instead of owning it and doing their own permit, if they just donated it, installed it and donated it to the police department or the city? Wouldn't that be much better in many ways since we already perfected that process?
That's, that's what I was just saying, that we've already done that. And the other element is that I think the police as part of this process have a neighborhood sensitivity to make sure that it's appropriately placed.
Right.
And so, so the public property one, I think, if you're agreeing with Councilmember Holstich, I think we have a majority agreement that it would just have to be a donation to the police essentially, or however that gets legally worded.
Right, like that's what I, Right. Like that's what I, I'm saying to change the proposal from like a permitting process and ownership by the neighborhood or applicant or whoever to donate it to the police department and have it be owned by the city. Is that different than what you're saying, Mr. Mayor?
It's six of one, half dozen the other. That.
It's the same thing, really.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
So I think we have a majority agreement for the public property. That that's, it would basically be if they want to put it on public property, it's part of our, our existing police ALPR program. You see, I see nods. Yes. Okay. So now the question is, oh, Councilmember Garner, sorry.
The only thing is that still doesn't address how they're making this decision to decide that they want to be donating this camera to the HOA and any factual, factual information being distributed to the residents. It's also very weird to me that you can opt out that, I mean, if you can opt out, you can opt out, but it also just seems to defeat the purpose of what we're doing. But that's all for the neighborhoods, I guess, to figure out for themselves.
You're, you're right, Councilmember Garner. We will have to come up with a policy for how to define what a legitimate request is from a neighborhood or an HOA. So that, the details of that need to be worked out. And if the council wants us to bring back the policy for a formal blessing, we can. If you want to give us directions just to do it, we can. But you're right, there will be details like that we need to work out.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure that's addressed.
Okay. So I think for the one in public property, we want to treat that like a donation to the police. And you're still some details to be worked out. But again, our police already have a policy that if they put something in a neighborhood that I'm not sure, can't remember exactly what it is, that there is a neighborhood sensitivity to how that is worked out. Is that correct, Chief?
Yes.
Okay. So the question now is people putting them on, on private property and I don't know how that works. Because they, would they be giving exclusive access to the police? Mayor Protem?
If I could ask the city attorney to repeat the portion of your staff report that addressed this specifically, just so we could get a refresher on.
Yeah. So obviously, the city regulates the use of private property in many ways. We say what uses are allowed in our zoning ordinance. We regulate different types of businesses and activities on, on private property. In order to do so, we have to define what a legitimate government interest is in regulating, regulating somebody's private property. So when we say, you know, we're not going to allow noise that is too loud, that's to protect the public from excessive noise and neighbors from excessive noise. So here we would have to articulate what the city's governmental interest is in regulating somebody's use of a camera, a security camera on their private property. You know, property owners have various reasons why they might want to use cameras on their property, including security of their persons and, and property. And so there, there might likely be property owners or occupants of property who would object to the city's regulation of their use of, of security cameras on their property. One potential governmental interest that has been discussed and is conceivable is kind of expanding the rights of privacy of people in public areas who otherwise don't have a right of privacy against being photographed or filmed. If you're walking down the street or on the sidewalk, or probably even in, in your own front yard, you don't have a right of privacy against being photographed or filmed. So the regulation of these cameras on private property would essentially be the city expanding the, the privacy rights of members of the public in those public areas, which again, conceivably, I could, I could see the city having the legal authority to do. Cities expand private rights in other ways and have done so historically. The, the real issue is kind of how we distinguish automated license plate readers from all the other variety of cameras that exist in today's life, whether it's, you know, just a regular Ring camera that doesn't transmit data and ping the, the state databases and automatically provide it to law enforcement, to dashboard cameras, to cellphone cameras. The ordinance would have to basically establish what the parameters of that expanded privacy right are. And while I'm not saying it can't be done, it hasn't been done and it would, it would be an undertaking to, to devise that, that expanded privacy right.
Is there a question really for the chief on this? If, does, if it's on private property and an individual has access to the data, is there a scenario in which it would interfere with police activity if you get pinged and they know the reason, they, they know the vehicle, or they know whose house it was at? Or does that work like that?
I don't see a way that that could happen because they don't get any of the CEGIS data. They'd have no idea who that car is registered to unless they know the person from living in the neighborhood. And that we would not broadcast if we're currently doing an investigation of some kind where they would be alert to that. The only way I can see that is if we put out a public, a public media statement saying we're looking for vehicle XYZ, and that vehicle shows up in the neighborhood and they happen to see it, they could still report to the police either way, but we're making that public on our own. The question, you know, I, I guess I have, Mayor, is if there's a way that even the private property cameras can be donated to the police department, and then that way nobody else has access to the data except the police department as part of the, the regulation that the city puts on top of this.
Is, is that an option, City Attorney?
Yes, I think, I hope I addressed that in the staff report. If a private property owner wants to put one of these cameras on, on their private property and comply with the city's policy and provide data to the, to the city exclusively, then they can voluntarily do that.
And, and in that case, could the police still have some say in sort of how it's positioned? I mean, if somebody puts a cam on, if I put a cam on my front yard and just face it at my neighbor, I can see how whether, even if they're not a criminal, it'd be kind of, I know the Ring camera is, could be, I could do the same thing, but that data is not going to the police right away unless there's.
I think we could set up that type of arrangement because even though the private property owner wouldn't have to enter into an encroachment agreement or an encroachment permit, they would still have to enter into some sort of MOU with the, with the city for us to have access to the data. And it takes two to tango. And so we could just say, no, we don't want access to that. And then they wouldn't effectively be able to, to use it that way.
Okay. I'm going to ask Councilmember Holstage. Would that, how would, would that resolve a lot of the issues? Or, and you're, you are more well versed in some of the privacy issues than I am, so.
Can I, can I ask just staff, just to explain the capacity? So for a private individual who installs this license plate reader on their private property, like what's the full capacity with Flock? What's the ability of the camera and, and what data does the homeowner, the private citizen get from Flock?
A couple of things on the, I think what you're asking, Councilmember Holstage. One, the cameras cannot be directed like at a neighbor's house. That doesn't record that. It only records the license plate as it passes on this, the cameras on the street, for instance. So it's not a video recorder. It's more of a snapshot, if you will. So that would be something that is important because you could put it on the front of your house facing your neighbor unless all you would get is the vehicle pulling in and pulling out possibly. The second thing is, is I understand your question, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the data, if we had, if they were to donate it to us, they would only have, they wouldn't have any access to the data at all. It would only be the PD that would have the access to that data. And in my mind, if the direction from council was we only want the police department to have that data, and they want to have dual access to it, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to play with them. And we wouldn't want that information because the council has told us on how to operate. And I believe, I, I don't know, I'd have to check the Flock to see if that, for instance, that camera can be, can be restricted to the, to the database in general. I don't know that answer.
Right. That's what I'm wondering, like the private capacity. For example, I had a neighbor who lived kitty corner to me. He submit, he sent letter, city emails to the city with photos of city hall with a bomb over it. And he frequently emailed about getting his gun arsenal back from PD. He was really upset that PD had taken his gun arsenal a decade ago or more, and then he got it back. So I was always personally concerned about my, and my family's safety. And so if that neighbor installed a license plate reader on his private property on Farrell Drive, very busy, busy street, and he could then, could they track the comings and goings of individual neighbors like with my license plate? Like what's the ability for a private citizen to, to track it? I appreciate that we don't want to play with those people, you know, if they're not giving sole access. I think the only way I support this policy is with sole access to PD because you're the government, right? There's protections and controls and your public servants. Like what, you know, what's the capacity that Flock is giving these individual people who install these on their private property? Not to give ideas for all the people who email us death threats, but right? Like that's the concern, not just for individual council members, but for police officers, right? For neighbors. I mean, you could imagine the risk.
Yeah. So to answer your concern, the only thing that they would get is a photograph of the vehicle and the license plate if they were allowed to have access. They don't get any information as to who owns that vehicle, anything else. You can inquire the database to find out where a vehicle is. On the one camera that you have, they don't get access to the entire database of, of the Flock cameras nationwide. They only get that one camera that they have possessed. And I just checked with my expert on it and, and yes, that camera can be restricted by Flock so that we don't see that information. So if they chose to put their camera in by the, by themselves, they can still, on private property, they can get whatever they want, but we don't have to have access to that.
Just to clarify on the, if you, one second. When I talk about private property, that also could be an HOA. I mean, that doesn't mean somebody's house. It could be the entrance to an HOA. So it's not necessarily one house. It could be a whole neighborhood. I mean, if an HOA puts them all around their neighborhood facing around, they're in the whole neighborhood.
Or a private business or if long as it was public, private property not accessible with public, yes.
Right. And I appreciate that it's just a snapshot, but actually could track comings and goings, patterns. I'm trying really hard to remember my law school. I took a First Amendment class and I, you know, there's a lot of Supreme Court cases, right, with like tracking devices and your, you know, right to privacy and like your movements of a vehicle, even if it is in public right of way. So, you know, City Attorney is a much better attorney than me, right? But you could imagine there would be some, there's, it is collecting data. I mean, I would distinguish this very much from like a Ring camera, right? Which is taking photos, which is kind of like limited in scope, which, you know, doesn't survey, like really keep people under surveillance. But this has the ability to actually track individual license plates, correct? And like track the movements of, of those individual license plates.
Well, only to the cameras that they would have access to. So if they have a camera in front of their house, they only get access to that one camera, just like they would if they had a regular video camera on their house. They would not have access to the other cameras that we would have access to.
Sure. I understand. But they have access to more than just a camera. They have access to full, a full technological program that allows the tracking of movements by license plate.
Just for that camera?
For that camera. But if it's in the entrance of an HOA, then you could know the comings and goings of all your neighbors by their license plates.
Yes, potentially you could.
That's different than a camera, in my opinion, from a, as a policy matter, but.
From a technological standpoint, I'm trying to understand the distinction you're making. Because a video camera would also have that. You would still have to scroll through it and, and look and see when the vehicle comes and goes.
Because of the, yeah, I mean, I'm trying to like fully understand Flock's interface, but from my understanding, it's a much more sophisticated level of technology that Flock is offering. That's why it's such an effective tool for the police department. For example, it's better than just putting up general cameras, video surveillance cameras all over the city, right? This is giving you a real tool to find and track movement in cars with specific data. And then you have a database. And I don't know if an individual HOA would have, you know, all the databases. It sounds like it wouldn't. But then I don't know what the point is for an individual unless they're like tracking movements. But it's, it's opening up an entire toolbox of tools. That seems different than, to me, than just a video camera. But I know it's, you know, it's interesting. It's different policy. It's a new issue for the city, I think, and technology and AI and all of the role of that in our city. So, thank you, Chief.
Yes, and I appreciate the, the thought and intellect you're putting into this. I think what you're referring to is there is a, a search tool that you could single out that one license plate to identify the picture of that license plate and at what time. So yes, there is that capability.
Thank you. As a domestic violence attorney who's had, you know, their clients surveyed, it's hard to not think that way. So thank you.
Mayor Protem, could you have a comment?
Yeah, I think if council's already supporting the thought of the Flock cameras on HOAs and, and recognized neighborhoods, only if that data is belonging to the police department, why wouldn't we think the same on a private residence? If a private residence wants to put one, why wouldn't we just invite them to release the data to exclusive control of the police department and that private residence has no access, no control of it?
Well, the, what we also talked about in public is that they're actually donating because it also has to follow.
Yeah, yeah.
The police's.
They have no control over it. So however our words are that the private residence would, would have no access to the data and.
And they have to follow our agreement with Flock, basically, which, which Councilmember Holstage made, you know, was sure is very, very good. So is that the solution? Then we just, any, any automatic license plate is basically reader, it, can we say that whether it's on public or private property?
It's probably going to be a little bit different policy because we're not going to have issues of like organizational status and whatnot. But if the council wants to essentially provide direction to the city staff and the police department that they can enter into MOUs with purely private property owners to receive the exclusive access to the data from license, automated license plate readers, you can, you can provide that. You know, as the city manager reminded me, at some point, I don't know if the police department's going to want 10,000 license plate reader accesses, but so the, the police department could be given discretion as to when to say yes or no.
That is part of the policy right now with the neighborhood policy, is that they are, you know, when we talked about this a few months ago, we specifically raised this because you don't want the police suddenly, even on, in their 15 that they have, putting them all in one neighborhood because it would be, it would be, you know, it would, it would not be proper. So we could, it's a similar policy now where the police say, no, this is, it would have to be something the police then could justify and say, yes, this is a legitimate use and would follow our policy. Councilmember Middleton?
I apologize. I needed to step out for a minute. Maybe I'm missing something, but I'm struggling to understand how we regulate the private use of a private camera that's on private property.
And that's a fair question. What we're talking about right now isn't so much as regulating the use of the cameras. It's really the city's position if the It's really the city's position, if the city is approached by a private property owner to enter into a, almost a contractual relationship to have access to the camera and the data that they happen to have placed on their private property. So it's not us acting as a land use regulator or private property regulator. We're acting more in our contractual capacity.
And I can appreciate that we would want to have the same kind of rules where we're entering into a contractual relationship. I'm, I'm still struggling a little bit as to when we would want to take into that. And I certainly would not want to get into any situation where someone has a private camera and there is a break in or other, some other type of illegal activity. And private property owners are not able to share the information that they have on their cameras with the police department in part of an investigation.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think we're suggesting that.
Okay, so are we suggesting now that if any ALPR camera that that they want to have the police have access to falls under basically a donation or exclusive use of the police under our current policy? Is that something that would make sense? I'm going to ask the chief this directly.
That would make sense to me as long as we can do it lawfully. Is that if someone wants to install a camera and for us to have exclusive access, or else we just don't play with that community? Because, and then that way they're limited to just their cameras and it doesn't really mean anything and they can do that anyway without our permission, as I understand it.
Councilmember Holstich, does that? Does that resolve most of the issue, other than the fact that people still have cameras on their property, which we can't control?
I have significant, I'm fine with, it would be my preference that all of this technology is donated to the police department for their exclusive use because they are a government agency and we have protections and they're public servants. I'm very concerned about the use of this on private property. And I appreciate that there's limitations there, but it is very, very different to me than, than video or, or camera use, so. I don't have a good answer here. It's a difficult issue for on private property.
Mayor Protem, where are you on this?
Well, I, I keep, every time Councilmember Holstich says something, it raises another question. So HOAs are the one neighborhood, one PS neighborhoods could be private property. I think I'm talking more about private residence. If a private residence or business was going to install a camera, they could only do the flock camera if they were falling within the proposed ordinance that we're asking staff to bring back, that it is, it can only be done if it falls within our policy that's already established and the data is only accessible by our police department.
Again, they can buy a flock camera, they can enter into an agreement with Flock, but they're not going to get the same kind of criminal justice data that they would if they had that exclusive provision of data to the, to the city.
So regardless of what we say about private residence or private business, we're just trying to encourage if somebody wants to install it, that they give the data to the police department. But if a private residence wants to install one, they can do one on their own, no matter what. Yeah.
Can't legally, can we legally stop them from doing this on their own property? And we're saying the police will not play with them, so it becomes useless, it essentially becomes useless, right? That's how we do it? I, okay, well, it's not ideal, but I think, I don't know how you stop someone. And I don't know, can, can we just say that these are banned unless they go to the police? Or, but you can't really stop someone from putting on their private property if.
Again, that, that goes back to my discussion. We'd have to draft an ordinance that defines what the privacy interest is that the city's trying to protect and how this, this, we'd have to define what the, what the technology is that is of concern to the city and assume that technology is going to change on a daily basis. If the council would like us to, we can.
No, Councilmember Garner, did you want to comment?
Yeah, so this is all part of why this is so complicated, right? This isn't, we know that technology will advance, it's going to continue to advance. I have concerns with Ring cameras, right? But those are prevalent now, you see them everywhere you go. There's all sorts of technology that we have not regulated and now we're looking at this and it just grows and grows and grows with concern. At the end of the day, it becomes this personal desire, right? Some people feel very safe having a Ring camera or other surveillance device at their home. Even before Ring cameras, we've had security devices of some sort, security cameras in lots of businesses, lots of personal residences. So that's part of why this is, in some ways, a moral question that people have. And it's not, I'm not here to say it's a good or bad judgment. It's just personal opinion on how we should regulate, how we should live and what kind of society that we want to live. It's a much larger theoretical discussion, which is what makes this so difficult to be doing on the dais. Who are we to decide? Yes, I understand we're getting information from the public, we are a governing body, but at the end of the day, this is much bigger than the five of us, which is why it's much easier to focus in on the public use and what we truly have control over, rather than each individual homeowners.
Yeah, I perfectly find not having individual residents and businesses, not even getting into that. If we, I'm perfectly happy if we just follow staff recommendation here with the addition of that the, the data all, only has access, is only accessible to the police department and not even deal with the question of private residence or private business. And that goes back to what Councilmember Middleton was saying, you know, getting into that, that regulation of the individual. I, I agree, we shouldn't, let's, let's not go down that road.
Yeah, I think, Councilmember Holstich, did you have a comment? So, I mean, I do, I mean, Councilmember Garner raises a very good point. Technology is changing and how this, how this will affect down the line is, you know, we can't even really imagine, and this is the flock camera today, and we don't know what happens going down the line. But what I would say makes the most sense, we came up with a good policy for our police. And so we could say, any, any camera that goes on public property basically is donated to the police under our current policy. Any camera that's on private property, whether it's an HOA, whatever, if they want the police to have access and, and, and use it, then it basically becomes exclusive to the, to the police under our current policy. If they want to have it on their private property, whether it's a residence or an HOA and they're not willing to do it exclusive, then the police still play, so to speak. And to me, that would, doesn't resolve the long-term moral question that Councilmember Garner raised, but it, it addresses this, these specific requests that we're getting and for at least the near future, until we determine that something else, and technology changes. I will make that a motion, that any camera that goes onto public property becomes essentially part of our police program that exists. Any camera that's on private property would either have to be under the exclusive use, if the police are going to participate, it's exclusive use by the police under our current policy. And if they're not willing to do that, then our police are not involved in that camera.
Good with that, provided that we are clear that homeowners, business owners who have camera systems and want to share information that they were covered, are able to do so, either when there is a crime or there's a suspicion of a crime.
They're covered for what?
That they're able to share that information with police.
Yes, that, that is clear. It's not the same as the real-time monitoring of Flock.
And we're, we're saying Flock tonight, but we're really talking about the automatic license.
We're saying Flock because that's who our police have an agreement with. So we don't have an agreement with any other company at this point.
But Flock could bring in other technology. So we're specifically talking about the automatic license plate reading technology. We're not talking about other technology that Flock may have next year.
That's correct.
Or in five years down the road, we go with a different vendor of some kind.
Restate the motion?
Okay, so my motion is that any ALPR camera that goes onto public property has to be basically given to the police under our current policy and program with Flock. Any camera that is on private property, whether it's a residence or HOA or otherwise, it would have to be either the exclusive use of the police under our current policy with Flock or our police are not involved in the monitoring of it, but could accept data at a, after, at a later date, if so provided.
And just to clarify, when you say basically provided or basically given to the city, the private HOA or neighborhood would still own and pay for the maintenance and, and operation of the camera?
Yes.
Oh, we didn't have a second yet? Third.
A roll call vote, please.
Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Garner?
No.
Councilmember Holstich?
No, and if I can just explain my vote, I fully support the compromise and the position. We worked, and I worked very, very hard on this issue with Flock and with our police department and with the mayor, thank you to him for working with me. I appreciate, I think this is good policy for the public portion. I have significant concerns about private use, as I detailed earlier. And I think that this is more analogous to policies around like facial recognition or automatic readers of other data and not cameras. And so for that reason, I'll be voting no, because I don't want to see the proliferation of these on private property.
Mayor Protem DeHart?
Yes.
Motion carries three, two.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your, your work on this. The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Our first speaker is Marcy Hirschberg, followed by Abraham Ishak. Is Marcy here? I do not see her here, so we will go to Abraham Ishak, followed by Dr. Jesse Niemeyer Romero. Oh.
I just want everybody to.
Could you wait till you're at the microphone, please?
Hi, my name is Marcy Hirschberg. I'm 60 years old. I am currently waiting to see for the last year I've been blind, okay? I've had the disabilities. I'm also a sex change from 1976. I lived here for 33 years in Palm Springs. And I came here from Beverly Hills, okay? I retired from Las Vegas as a showgirl, a real showgirl. I mean, not what you saw in movies, okay? This is the problem, housing situation, housing for just people to be humane, okay? I had section eight voucher for 22 years. I bought a place, I got bit by a pit bull, so I bought a place. I got rid of my section eight because that's the law, I know the law. I practice the law, I went to Harvard, okay? I know what I'm doing, okay? Now, I go to the transgender housing wellness center, I volunteer, I don't work there, okay? There's a person there who's the housing specialist, okay? Now, I have been through the Hope Foundation, I went to court for two years, I got all the diplomas, okay, everything, because my mother passed away. I lost my mind, I got it back because I'm smart. I have to, I have to live, I have to make sure that everybody is housed, clothed and fed, okay? That is my mission here. I am to take over for Mother Earth, okay? That's what I have to do. I'm a Jewish woman and I'm going to Jewish, okay? And this is a problem. You know that all the people that are homeless shelter were released in New York City and that's where I'm from, okay? They are just as able to get housing as anybody else because if they're not a criminal and they're not a menace, they have the right. You cannot discriminate against them. But I am sitting here, I was put there from sober living after I was done with all the, you know what I mean? Rehab sober living, to become a Hope program specialist. Now I'm sitting here, then they locked the door. I have never had an eviction from them. They locked the door, okay? And locked me out and took all my clothes away and everything I own. And this is all because.
Your time is up, Ms. Hirschberg?
Okay, so where do we go from here?
Thank you. The next, the next speaker is Abraham Ishak, followed by Dr. Jesse Niemeyer Romero.
Today I address the residents of Palm Springs. This city council has taken us for fools, expecting us to swallow their hollow justifications for supporting a resolution in solidarity with Israel while conveniently ignoring its human rights violations. I will say it again, this resolution insults our intelligence and the claim that this resolution aligns with national policy doubles down on that. This is the same governing body that has boldly spoken out in support of civil rights, including marriage equality and advocating for reproductive freedom. So why the sudden change of heart when it comes to addressing Israel? The answer lies not in principles or values, but in personal political ambitions and financial interests. It's no secret that some members have their eyes set on being elected to higher office or being reelected and are eager to court favor with influential donors. Could it be that their support for Israel is merely a calculated move to fund their campaigns? We cannot stand idly by while our elected officials betray the very ideals they claim to uphold. The Palestinian people have suffered far too long under Israel oppression. And by siding with Israel, our council members are complicit in their suffering, famine and death. It's time to hold our elected officials accountable for their hypocrisy. We demand transparency, integrity and a genuine commitment to human rights for those who claim to represent us. Let us not be deceived by their empty rhetoric. It's time to speak truth to power and demand justice for all. To the survivors of Section 14 and their legal counsel, I urge you to stand firm and demand higher settlements from the city. The same governing body, including the city manager and the entire city council that shamelessly dismisses human rights violations cannot be trusted to uphold justice and dignity. Your fight for justice is our fight, and we will stand with you every step of the way.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dr. Jesse Niemeyer Romero, followed by Zachary Daniel Stone.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My comment this evening is in response to an email that I received earlier this week from my district council member. I was taken aback when I read the words aggressive when describing tone and meetings with council members described as hostile. I think what my council member may be interpreting as an aggressive tone is frustration. Let us recall, I heard nothing from their office for over two months. What may be perceived as aggression or hostility is actually extreme disappointment. Additionally, why is the city council member characterizing meetings with other council members as hostile? I think the council member is referring to other community members who've been included in these meetings. Their passion for the issues surrounding the council's actions and emotions about what is happening in Gaza because of cultural and family ties are perhaps being misinterpreted and mischaracterized. Expressing oneself enthusiastically does not equate aggression or hostility. Using such verbiage is gaslighting and unproductive in creating a healthy environment for citizens to engage in the governing of their own city. Let me pose a. Let me pose a question. Shouldn't all citizens be civically engaged and care about the topics that are being addressed in the public sphere? The email I received looks to do the exact opposite. Copying city personnel such as the city attorney and police chief has subtle notes of intimidation and if they are redirecting questions about public comments, why not include the city clerk who like this evening facilitates public comment? Altogether, the email I received is an attempt to pivot and position the council member as a victim. However, public servants at all levels of government, like myself and the council member, are expected to be open to public critique and comment regarding their performance or lack thereof. The citizens here are the Palestinians in Gaza that I and others are seeking to represent and to a lesser extent, the residents of District Four, whose council member declines to respond to requests for meetings in a timely fashion and seemingly refuses to engage in civil discourse. Is the council member a victim? I would argue that they are not.
Thank you. The next speaker is Zachary Daniel Stone.
You guys ready to go? Let's see, been a little while, been three months since I've been here. Let's start out with the city charter here. Article six, section 600H, rent review commission. The first three words after that are, there shall be. The next, the next word is a, and then it says rent review commission, consisting of five members. I was looking at the annual recruitment boards and commissions. I didn't see the rent review commission on here, so I was kind of a little worried. This is in the charter, so I'm needing to, you know, there's, I'm just wondering what's going on with this. Also, I found where all the meetings are supposed to be conducted through Robert's Rules of Order, it didn't say that for city council meeting, but it is what it is. All right, got a minute left. So when I was down at the India Law Library today, looking at some different stuff, I was going through the California jurisprudence there, the 3D, 21st century edition, right? Looking at the duty of a city council and the city manager, right? To act, to fill the rent review commission required by the city charter. I mean, this is an absolute failure, so I'm looking at what are my legal options at this point? Can I, you know, I don't want to sue the city itself, I think it would be each one of you individually because you're not doing your job. Okay, follow up on that. My car, abandoned vehicles, looking through the municipal code today. Oh my God, so you guys towed my car in November, I've been on the streets since then, it's been outstanding. You didn't follow any of the rules from section nine or section 100 of chapter 80 of the municipal code, title, what is this, title 11, I believe? None of it was followed, so gonna need to figure out what we're gonna do to get my car back or where it's even at. What else do we have that I really wanted to cover here? Oh, Agwa denied my employment insurance, so if anyone has an envelope or a stamp, that would be helpful, that would be some constituent casework that we could all do together. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
No further commenters.
Okay, the next item, city council and city manager request for upcoming agenda development and upcoming agenda list. City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're trying to plot out a few more meetings in advance too, for us to look at things. At the next meeting, we'll have another, one of the TOT incentive agreements, like similar to what we heard tonight. This one will be for the Life House Palm Springs, for hotel incentive. We have some police department grant awards that will be coming before you for your approval and our wastewater treatment plant. You know, we get questions and comments about odor control and other things, so we want to bring forward a report on that and talk about that. On the 25th, we'll be back with an update for you on the library outreach that they've been doing, an update on their work, so we're planning on that. We'll have two historic designations for two properties and then the foodware ordinance update that you've had some questions for us about as well. And then just farther out in May, we will be coming back with the airport master plan on the airside part of it, opposed to the land side. And then towards the end of May, we do want to come back with our Palm Springs disposal, delinquent waste disposal charges and we'll have a DDA agreement with Neighborhood Partnership Housing Services, which are the desert highlands vacant lots that we've been trying to move along for homeownership opportunities. And then last, I would like, I do, would like to say, we are still moving on April 17th towards our vendor fair and I'm told we are now up over 450 people from around the valley that want to attend, so if you're still interested, I think you can go to our city website under procurement and you can get details about participating in that vendor fair at the convention center on April 17th. So more to come on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other council member comments? Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. Just ask that we close the meeting in honor of Mrs. Canales, who was a library, our, sorry, a librarian in our children's department since I was a little girl and then worked at the Boys and Girls Club and also worked as the after-school program and most recently as a secretary at Palm Springs High School. She passed away on March 1st and her memorial was this week. So a lot of lovely people who came out from across the city to honor her memory, so if we can just close in her honor today, I'd appreciate that.
That's great. Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you. I'm sorry to follow that. Thank you, councilmember Garner, for raising that and her name and her honor. I just wanted to note for the record that those community members who called in and provided public comment, who were there in person and on Zoom for closed session for section 14, I heard your comments, I listened in through the link in the public record, so I appreciated hearing that public testimony. I was not able to join the Zoom meeting, I hit traffic until I was in my physical location as posted, but I do appreciate everyone participating and just wanted to note that I did listen into those comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just a few things, I wanted to thank the organizers of our neighborhood picnic, which was a huge success, very well done. I know a lot of volunteers, I know our city staff worked hard, a lot of the neighborhood organizations and it's always a highlight every year. I also wanted to mention for the public that we have EngagePalmSprings.com, which is our new website, which has a lot of great information about what's happening in the city and you can also ask questions and raise issues, everything from road closures to I also want to mention our boards and commissions applications are open now through the end of April, so please apply. We have, I think we have a few dozen openings. Today, Mayor Protem DeHart and councilmember Middleton and I attended the Senior Inspiration Awards, which is an annual event hosted by the county where they give awards to seniors who have set an example of giving and throughout the whole Riverside County and Palm Springs honored our own Lynn Hammond, who was very well deserving. And I did want to just mention, I had the honor of welcoming the first lady to Joe Biden, Dr. Joe Biden to Palm Springs this packed weekend, which was a great honor and a great honor for our city. And with that, we will now close the meeting. Sorry, I don't...
It's okay, for Irene Canales.
For Irene Canales. The meeting is now adjourned at 8:20 PM and our next regular city council meeting will be held on Thursday, April 11th, 2024 at 5:30 PM.